I agree, but it's certainly able.
Well, why not release the emails if there's no issue?
I'd like to open up a continuation of a public hearing. Changes to King Street scheduled for 7 p.m. This is a continuation of a joint meeting that we had with the City Ordinance Committee. They have continued their meeting to this Monday.
Tuesday.
Is it Tuesday?
It's Tuesday because it's a random day. It's not very usual.
So they're going to continue, they continue to their meeting on Tuesday and they will be doing their decision-making process that day. We, the planning board, that continue tonight, we're going to continue our process tonight. As part of the King Street zoning that we're looking for, we have to finish up tonight, one is the map change for central business. We're going to, we have to vote on the expansion of the central business down King Street. We have to vote on the entranceway business and we have to vote on the King Street. So really, we have three parts to King Street. At the last meeting, the way we did it was kind of went through them one at a time. We didn't vote. So I think Carolyn, should we do one at a time again, do central business, do central business and King Street, but save the voting for the end? Or do the voting?
Yeah, or you could, I think, go through each one and then maybe go back through and see if there are any final issues or whatever and then take them by section so that the map change for the expansion of central business.
Move that first.
Yeah, and maybe move up the corridor and...
But do entranceway second?
Yeah.
Take the vote after each part?
Yeah.
Okay. But do we have to close, we can close the public hearing, because the public hearing's open for all of them right now.
Yeah, yeah, you can close it at any point that you feel is appropriate.
But will we close the public hearing for each individual piece?
We keep it open.
Just keep it open.
And then close it all at once.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So the first one, let's do the map change for central business.
Yeah, maybe I should just go over a quick summary sort of, because there are people here that weren't here last time and I'll just run through. So again, the zoning package for King Street addresses the corridors essentially from Main Street downtown all the way up to the River Valley Market. And we went over the history at the last hearing, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but basically this takes us back essentially to 2002 when the highway business district zone changes were made, but it just addressed retail standards. And there's been sort of this movement since then to sort of re-look at King Street and the zoning and address a broader set of issues for the corridor, not just in the highway business district, but the entire thing. And so there were a series of events that took place over the years and particularly sort of heated up in November, in 2009, and there's been concerted effort since 2009 up to this spring where you all as a planning board did your final recommendations for ordinance change and submitted that to City Council, which is what's in front of you for discussion. So again, we talked last time about changes to central business boundary in the lower part of the screen is, this is trumbull down here. And so this is all currently general business and a little bit of urban residential C, which is the church building here and a couple of units here. So the proposal is to expand the central business boundary up to the North Street intersection here. Again, it's, for the most part, it's general business with a couple of blocks of urban residential C. There was a lot of discussion about whether two-story should be mandatory in this section. And so central business essentially addresses that because there's a 30-foot height, minimum height requirement for new construction. The next section is going from North Street. Again, there's, Dunkin' Donuts is below this line in the central business proposed change. And this is the old Honda site here. The rail trail runs along this side. So this yellow area essentially is a highway business zone now. And the proposal is to create a new zoning classification that's based on the general business platform. And the idea behind this is that this is really, have a lot of dense neighborhoods in this area. You've got the rail trail connection which can bring, that sort of expands the realm of where people can get to King Street by bicycle and by foot. And going across the other way, the rail trail continues, so there's a lot of accessibility in this area and more pedestrian activities. The idea is really to take this area, there is, this is where you're starting to see more vehicle trips in this area, but focus on this as the next phase for really intense development. Buildings up to the street, multi-story is the goal, but it's not mandated. But the, really, the way that buildings address the street is the goal here and also have access both from the rail道 and the sidewalk. Right, so the active rail line is also here as well. This, the other change in this area in rezoning it from highway business to entranceway business is sort of what we're calling the public investment into the infrastructure and sort of creating this partnership with development as an inducement to building, buildings up close to the street is the traffic mitigation fees are the same as they would be, or zero as they would be in general business in this area. And that's sort of seen as the incentive to get developers to build in a way they might not, might otherwise not want to build, especially in this large parcel here. In this area are also new buffer requirements along the street. Single-story is allowed, but design standards would be applicable to all uses. No parking is allowed between the street and building, it could be on the side, but that's also like the general business district, so it really takes off from that point. And it's really seen as a transition between the areas north, which we're going into next, is the rail trail and the substation here. Taco Bell is just north of that. So again, access from the sidewalk and the rail trail is sort of seen as crucial and key in this area. The proposed changes then from the next section, the rail trail to the River Valley Market, is treated slightly differently. Again, it's highway business now, the goal is to, or the idea is to keep it highway business, but make changes so that design standards apply to all uses and not just retail as the 2002 zoning changes addressed. And really address the aesthetic qualities along the corridor as well as the pedestrian and bicycle amenities along the corridor. In this area is where the vehicles, the counts for traffic are much, much higher in this section of King Street. And what that does is with those vehicle counts, that really drives up the land costs and then puts the development potential out of more of the smaller, locally-owned kind of operations to those developers who really have the multinational or national development capacity to pay for those high rents and high land costs. And so because of that, it's really necessary, what we've determined from our research, that the developers of that caliber are not going to take big risks, particularly in this market, in developing in a market like North Hampton with buildings that don't have parking in front and that are multi-story for the most part. And it really takes a public-private investment, public investment particularly in the infrastructure to support changes that might happen on the private side of the corridor. So again, going back to the map change for the entranceway business, you all talked about for a while, the idea that the area south of the rail trail is sort of the next incremental step to try to push for that more intense development that is, maximizes the site in terms of building location. And the changes to the highway business are really about focusing on the site functionality and improve pedestrian safety, creating buffers. I don't know if this picture comes up very well, but flanking the public sidewalk along the street so that you have that safety between the sidewalk and any parking and then the sidewalk and the street so that it is more of a, it creates more of a comfort zone for people who are accessing King Street other than by automobile. Other changes from the 2002 zoning, the maximum setback that was established at that point at 55 feet is eliminated. That was cause for a great concern during this whole discussion about changes to the zoning in terms of not providing enough flexibility for developers. And really what it establishes is by having a setback, developers are more inclined to follow state statute in allowing pre-existing non-conforming structures to continue as they are instead of getting a lot of reinvestment and building that's more consistent with the zoning in order to avoid that maximum setback. They just would tend to reuse buildings and not really address any of those other non-conforming aspects. The other new aspect of the zoning is to create, again, pedestrian and bicycle-friendly access points from King Street to the actual development site. So the idea is to create a pedestrian path that safely accesses the site. So if you're walking on King Street and you want to get to a shop or a restaurant, you would have a facility to do that without feeling like you had to compete with cars that are crossing big sieves of parking lot and asphalt. Again, as we discussed, a dense buffer between the street and the parking lot. And this is sort of a graphic showing the layout based on the Nelson Nygaard study of King Street of how that might look. And again, this is many, many years into the future and over public investment as well as private investment into the private side of the land, but also the public infrastructure. And another big key thing was to allow more uses by right. We have a lot of special permits that are viewed as impediments to developers who are wanting to invest, but are concerned they might not get those permits. Things that we want to have happened on King Street but are currently now have those barriers. And as I mentioned before, design characteristics or requirements that would be required by all users and not just retail uses. So I don't know, there've been, the other piece of hearing last time was, we talked a little bit about possible changes that needed, either needed to be addressed because there were conflicts in the draft that were inadvertently left out, but also things that came up in the public hearing that might be addressed. So that, I submitted that in the staff report and I have a list here of, I don't know if that's, the text is really small, but, so I don't know if you want to go over those one by one or take public comments, but we talked, one of the big things I want to mention is, going back to 2002, there was a 90,000 square foot cap on retail establishments. That was never intended to be left out, but in going through all these changes, we realized that that one item was left out. So that is necessary for you to vote on in terms of a recommendation to make sure that gets amended back into the final ordinance package that goes to City Council. There was discussion last time about clarifying language for drive-through establishments and that there's a special permit process in certain districts, the general business and the central business and the entranceway business, that need to be clarified. And we discussed that a little bit. And then edits related to the cycle track provisions and to clarify really that the cycle track concept is for further discussion in the street corridor, but it's not intended to be, we're not intending for cycle tracks to be the term used on property, you know, when you get to the private side off of the street. And I know these are details that some, that we didn't necessarily get into a lot of detail during the public comment, because this ordinance is so vast and contains so much information that sometimes it's hard to explain all those things. And we talked a little bit about the changes to the design standards. Again, tweaking them to clarify but adding incentives in the highway business district for low-impact design standards for stormwater maintenance and trying to encourage people to implement those. And so maybe we would reduce the sidewalk widths in the highway business district if someone shows that they're doing that. There's another option on the table to also allow reduction of that sidewalk width if you're, or buffer width, I'm sorry, landscape buffer width for creating multi-use path that runs through your property that's wider than the six-foot minimum requirement. And then the glazing standards that we talked about last time too, those are all sort of on the table for you to formally make recommendations on.
Do you mean you want, when we do a vote, do we have to make the motion with these changes?
Yes.
Because at the last meeting, they weren't in the...
Right, well, because they weren't, they aren't part of the ordinance package that was formally introduced to City Council.
Oh, well, the...
So City Council has one packet and then these have come along since that one, so they have to be officially recommended as modifications.
Okay. And now the other thing on the staff report where he issues that Terry brought up, Terry Anderson?
Right.
Do you want to talk about those now or you want...
Some of them are in these recommended changes. There was one, so we can talk about those now, we can talk about them, I think for the most part, they've been addressed already in these changes. The one about the lighting standards in the entranceway business, there was a recommendation that Terry made to have the light poles be allowed to be 25 feet high instead of its 16 feet. And the reason, the rationale behind that request is that the higher the poles, you don't need to put so many on the site. But if you look at it from the other perspective, 25-foot-high poles for buildings that are really only 20 feet tall are sort of out of scale with the idea of that zoning classification and also the idea of trying to lessen lighting impact in that area that's closer to neighborhoods and really focus the lights on the pedestrian path so you can accommodate fewer lights at lower levels with that standard, it's more of a pedestrian thing. I think that's the only one that OPD staff would recommend and not adjust.
So of the five that are listed here, the first four have been incorporated. So in our voting, if we decide to move this forward, these four are going to be covered if we say to vote with those changes.
Right.
The fifth one, we can discuss it. I think I agree with Carolyn with the 25-foot-high light poles in the area of the building. Not what we want. So unless anyone else has a, strongly agree. Okay.
Could you just remind me what neck down means? I don't remember that phrase.
It just refers to the area where, and we probably need to just talk about this in more detail and you may want to take public comment before we go into that level of detail, but it really means a narrowing of the street. So you might have a, so this, in this particular case, there's the design and the design standards, which I can flip to on the screen as well, show within a parking lot, you typically have a 24-foot-wide drive aisle so cars can pass each other safely. But where you have a sidewalk crossing, the idea is to narrow that automobile traffic flow so that there's a forced slowing of cars wherever there's a sidewalk crossing so that the pedestrians essentially get the right-of-way and the cars know that. And the idea, the design really is about, any question was about necking down to 20, instead of going down to 18 feet, allowing a 20-foot dimension. The design was really about having mountable cobbled curb so that if you, if cars needed that extra width, they could, but you would be going very slowly, so there, it would reduce the complexity of the pedestrian.
What we do is, if there's any questions for the board before we open up the public comment? Any other question? So what we do is, we're going to, well, so the public hearing is still open. We can take public comment on all three phases, the map change, central business and highway business, and then we can decide how we're going to proceed after the public comment. That's okay. So if anybody from the public would like to comment on any of the three pieces? I think Phil, you had your hand up first, so...
I'm Bill Dwight. I live at 39 Mill Street. I came here last time to, and I'll reiterate that I endorse the process. I endorse nine tenths of this. Actually, I wouldn't even put a fraction on it. The concern that I expressed before, of course, was safe access for budding neighborhoods. And relative to the public-private investment, that clearly we're trying to invest money, public money to attract businesses to come into town and hopefully generate revenue. But the problem is, and those businesses are hoping to attract customers from a variety of areas, but the weird thing is with the way it's set up, they're going to attract customers for everywhere but the budding neighbors. It'd be, it's actually, access to these systems will be easier for people coming from Greenfield by their car than people from Hampshire Heights by foot. And this is, you know, and this isn't the new frustration for me, I was dealing with this when we were discussing it back in 2002. It was, and it was difficult because we didn't, our outreach was not particularly successful into the neighborhoods that I'm describing, so we, you know, I own my failure on that too. So the fact is, the fact that I didn't succeed and the fact that subsequent attempts didn't succeed doesn't mean that we should not consider the, and particularly the neighborhoods that are there that are basically isolated islands surrounded by traffic system. River Run Apartments, actually, Mary Calley will be speaking, described it as, as difficult as crossing a river, just trying to get to any system that is beyond their driveway. Crossing Damon Road to get to the Pride gas station, for instance, is very, it's, well, anyone who's driven down Damon Road can understand why that would be a problem. And Carolyn was gracious enough to come to a couple meetings with a group called Families with Power at Jackson Street School, representing parents of children in Jackson Street School, Bridge Street School, and other, and expanding into other school systems, talking about issues more relative to the school, but it's an organization that actually is empowering people within the community that have yet to be heard from. I'm glad to say that some of those folks are here tonight to speak to this issue. And you print, and, you know, and the problem is, is of course, it's not really germane to the corridor as we describe it, and a corridor is an apt description, because it is essentially a corridor that runs from downtown all the way to River Valley Market and then back also from the 91 entrance. There's no tendrils. I have a built-in tendril. I have access. I live on Myrtle Street. I can literally crawl down my sidewalk to get to any of the systems on King Street and walk at what will soon be a pedestrian crossing section. That is not true, as we said, of the hundreds of people who live in these, in these systems. So in that they don't, some of the issues that we're talking about aren't necessarily speaking directly to the design plans and the aesthetic or anything else. It does speak to the organic whole, the holistic system, which I think really obviously is part of consideration, should be. And I don't know the mechanism or the device that could be employed, even particularly in this zoning, that would help obviate the challenges. But one of the things that, and I don't even know this could apply, but one of the things that we did when we negotiated for Walmart to come in was they paid mitigation fees, mitigation fees to help fund a redesigned plan that may actually see fruition for Hatfield Street's juncture at King Street. And I think since the city's public investment is probably challenged and not likely to be robust, that, and I understand, I don't want to serve as a terrifying impediment to developers, but I think that developers, since they're pitching woo to customers, they have some obligation to help facilitate access for customers. So with that, I'll finish my comments and then, and then let you hear from the other folks. Thanks.
Just one note, Phil, you mentioned the money we got from Walmart. We called that's the group that's going to redevelop the Price Chopper.
Yeah.
The Price Chopper, part of what we negotiated with them is the traffic signal in front of Blue Monet at that signal, at that entrance to the four-way crosswalk. So that's part of the things that we've been doing since Walmart, but on King Street, as we do development on King Street, it needs that money to make it.
Right, so it would be a condition of permit?
It's already, yes, the permit's already granted, that's the...
No, no, but I mean condition for future permits.
Oh, yeah, so we do that.
Right, so when, when...
A temporary permit we get on King Street.
Right, well, I mean...
If traffic in case she goes to helping...
Yeah, it'll obviously be of critical importance when, when and if Cole Morgan flies.
Right, right.
Particularly what I'm talking about here. Thanks.
Hi. My name's Gwen Agnew, resident of North Hampton and also the principal of Jackson Street School. And I'm here as a representative of our school community. And we at Jackson Street pride ourselves on being a pedestrian-friendly school. We've done a lot of work and appealed to both the city and our state to do a lot of improvements in front of Jackson Street and the bike path. And we do have the most walkers and riders to school, so we really value that aspect of getting to and from school. And we also recognize that many of our students and their families live within walking distance of the school. And they have difficulty some, many times in having access to some of the King Street offerings that are there, partly because of the difficulty in crossing King Street trying to get to the other side, as well as access from Hampshire Heights down to King Street. When I became principal 15 years ago, a student was killed riding from Hampshire Heights to what was then Surview. He just was riding his bike and went right into the path of a car turning in. And I know that it's been approved since CBS built the access there, but it is something that does frighten us on a daily basis to think about the students and their families spending time on their feet or on their wheels getting to and from. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is that we do have a lot of families who live in River Run and they do get bused to our school, the students do, because they are second language learners and we have the program for the district. However, their families have very little access to our school for all the activities that we invite families to come to. So because often they do not have cars and we, so we have open house and we have lots of activities that we want families to come to and they really can't get there because there's, it's not a safe way to get to school if you have to walk. So I would just echo what Bill has said, that the corridor is great and we would just love to have the perpendicular if possible so that there's safety on Bridge Road and on Damon Road especially for the students and their families to get to and from all this wonderful new stuff and even just what we have already. Thank you.
Is somebody else in the back?
Hello. My name is Mary Calley and I live at 29 Laurel Park. I'm an organizer with Families with Power and a teacher at Jackson Street School. I've lived in North Hampton for 18 years, all of those years either on or very close to King Street. An apartment on King Street, I've been for many years at Hampton Gardens and now at Laurel Park. So I've always lived on King Street in North Hampton. My family walks and bikes as much as possible and for many of my earliest years in North Hampton, when I was very low income, I did not have a car. And I got everywhere with my son by bike, by stroller, by sled. That was how we got around. In 2010, as I was bicycling... In, in, in two thousand and ten, as I was bicycling with my daughter to school, I had a very bad bicycle accident on King Street, right in front of Walmart. And so I come here tonight especially with concerns about access and safety for bicyclists and pedestrians. I feel very strongly that, you know, I'm in support of the development on King Street, but I feel that it really needs to benefit everyone, and we need to not just think about how people from other neighborhoods will be able to get in and out to support all of those businesses, but particularly about how the people in the neighborhood who are going to be, you know, breathing all that extra exhaust from all that traffic that's coming to the neighborhood, people who live there really need to be able to get there safely and get around to do the rest of their, the things they need to do, get to school, get to visit their friends, get to the places they need to go. So we had a meeting on September twenty-ninth at Hampshire Heights to talk about the King Street development, we were very glad to have Carolyn there to explain to residents what's going on. And we, Josefina Rodriguez, she planned to come tonight, her son was sick and she couldn't be here. She lives on Barrett Street at Pheasant Home Apartments, but her testimony here tonight, I'll say it for her, was less fast food, more fruits and vegetables. That was her input. But we had many residents from Hampshire Heights, Hathaway Farms, and Pheasant Hill, El Baharedeya, Annabelle Rosero, Lucas Garcia, Neda Garcia, Martha Rodriguez, Abigail Claudio, and Josefina Rodriguez spoke about their safety concerns. And again, we understand that your primary, primary concern is the business development of that corridor, but for the record, we would really like to say that we hope to see that the businesses that are developing along King Street responsibly allocate adequate money to ensure safe, safety and access for pedestrians and bicyclists, including people who use strollers and wheelchairs. We'd like to see walls, sidewalks installed on Bridge Road from Jackson Street, the corner of Jackson Street, along Bridge Road to King Street. There is no safe way to get there, it's often very packed with traffic and cars, and it's very hazardous on foot or by bike, down to the Pride Station, the intersection of King Street, and then from King Street across Damon Road, there is no safe way to get to the River Run Apartments, to get to Industrial Park, to get to the Career, the Career Center, to get anywhere down that way, you can't access, that you can't safely get there. From North King Street, you can't connect to the bike trail, so we really strongly support the continuation of the bike trail. Right now, if you don't have a car, it is like there is a really big river that runs along King Street. You know, that, getting past that intersection of King Street and Bridge Road is, there are a lot of people who will not cross it. And what some people use as an alternative from North King Street trying to get down is Hatfield Street, which again, it's one of those tendrils off King Street, but there is no sidewalk and no bike lane. My son is riding a bike on that street every single day, there are trucks and cars hurrying off King Street at fifty miles an hour, and there's no, there's no room for a bike on there, and people, including my son, are there on bikes. So I think we need to understand that if we do this development, we know there's, you know, just with the Walmart, there's more tra, and, you know, and the Big Y renovation Staples, there's more traffic on King Street now, and with more development, there will be more traffic, and it's getting more and more dangerous for the people who live on King Street, and who are trying to reduce traffic by using bicycles and, and going by foot, and we're risking our lives. So we really ask you to, to take that into account and to help, you know, when the Big Y did their renovations and stuff, we had, you know, we saw those improvements, sidewalks behind Big Y, we saw some of those things, but we need to see those things continue because there is such an incredible need in this part of the city. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Navano. I, I work for the schools, I work for Bridge Street School, and I'm, I'm here to, to sort of add a voice to what everyone has said in the, in the group. I used to live at Hampshire Heights, I have since moved and, and I live on Bedford Terrace. I, when, when, and because I have no car at the moment, and I've had, I haven't had a car for a while, I mostly do walk a lot to, to and from the bank, it's Hampton Services Bank, or to see friends on, on, in River Run, and I, just like everyone has said, it's, it's really one of the hardest places to walk. And so my son and I have a system, we sort of use the, because we found out that, okay, we use the crosswalk at Stop and Shop, and then somehow connected through, through the back, who would find ourselves on, in the industrial, industrial area, and then we would somehow cross the street and get, end up going to River Run. And so we are able to, to get wherever we're going, so this is just adding a voice to, to what everyone has said. My son had a, asked me a question about, 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 about that part of, of, of King Street, and, and why, why it just, why there was no access to it, and I, and he say, he, he has a saying that, oh my goodness, that has to be the old city of North Hampton. I think to him, it's the ancient town side of North Hampton. In his head, that's what he thinks, because it's, because he, he rarely goes there because of the fact that we, we, we can't easily go. I tell him that it's so hard to, to access because we would have to, to either walk all the way along, along the main road, or, or would have to go via Jackson Street School, then cross down, then go through Hampshire Heights, and it's a longer walk sometimes, but I just wanted to add a voice to that and say that we, we, we hope that in the next development, there'll be more crosswalks and more, more sidewalks, and, and it would be much safer to walk along that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a loss in that?
Hi, my name is Luz Neda Garcia, and I am a member of Families with Power, and I have been working for Casa Latina for the last eleven years. So I, I know a lot of people in the Latino community, and I know many people that live in Hampshire Heights and Hathaway Farm, and in other projects actually in front of Hathaway Farm, and we are talking about low-income people, and many of them, they don't have the opportunity to have cars, so they walk everywhere they need to go. They walk to Big Y, they walk to Stop and Shop, and to the Survivor Center. And for that, they need to use the sidewalk through Bar Street, or from Hampshire Heights to, to Jackson Street. And we have to say that it was great to have the opportunity to have that part that has been fixed, a big bicycle route area that has been changed, but the part that goes from Jackson Street School to Hampshire Heights, that side is in very bad condition. The same for the sidewalk that goes through Jackson Street to King Street. Living in Hathaway Farm for eighteen years, it was very hard for me to go out with my son who has a wheelchair, a single chair, and to push him through the sidewalk, it was very dangerous. We have to be very careful. Now I have a few friends that live there, and a couple of them, one has a scooter, and the other one has a wheelchair, and they have the same issues that I had. And not to mention the families that have children, and they have to use the strollers. And in addition to that, the kids that have to go, that use the bicycles, sometimes they just go through, they are gonna, I have seen myself, many of them, that they use the, the road to go down through Jackson Street to King Street, instead they, you use, they just go through the, through the road because the sidewalk is pretty bad. So I wish, in the future, to have that opportunity to, to see that, that it's gonna be done because it's very important for the Latino community that they don't have the choice to decide to go in car or walk, they have to go walking. And for those people that go to the Survivor Center, you know, it's very important because it's not just, no, they need to, to get, to go there, to get, you know, if you go to Big Y, Stop and Shop, but people that go to the Survivor Center, they have big needs, so they really need to, to be safe in those areas, so. Thank you for listening to us, and I hope things are gonna change in the future, not too long. Thank you.
Oh, just one second. Did I talk about? So, is that Damon Road section, is that? I mean, it's not zoned, it's in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, kind of Damon Road. Damon Road's been really frustrating because it's such a slow process. There was a design for Damon Road done a dozen years ago now, so it's moving very, very slowly. As part of Amtrak coming back to North Hampton, it will be a signal installed, at least at this point, I hope it's not gonna change, it'll be a signal installed where industrial drive is Damon Road, and that signal will be tied to King Street. So at least it's not gonna solve the problem, but at least it makes it a little better in terms of crossing Damon Road.
It'll have a, a crossing signal.
We haven't seen it yet. Problem is, this is done by Mass, the rail side of Mass DOT, and so we haven't seen this much. We've certainly asked for that.
And sidewalks are what?
Sidewalks are further down. So Am, Amtrak is funding this little piece that's there. It, sidewalks are in the, the overall design piece that we waited a dozen years for, so we wanna have it. One of the discussions has been, the problem is from, to do from Damon Road all the way to the State Rail Trail is a big ticket item, and so just nothing happens year after year. The city's looking at going from King Street as far as Drossel's Funeral Home, for a few reasons, with one which is because the cost will be much lower just to do that portion, and that's a higher priority from what you're all talking about. It's more accurate making through the process.
I think one thing, just to, sorry, just to reply to some of the comments, there's, one of the things we've talked about, there's a difference between infrastructure and zoning. Zoning can control the buildings and the heights. Infrastructure is the building and the roads and the intersections. So as Bill alluded to, when a developer comes in and wants to do development on King Street, we will often ask for what we call payment, or traffic mitigation fees, and that has to do with the new stoplight and the intersection we're gonna get in front of the old Price Chopper in front of the diner. So as development occurs on King Street, so assuming this zoning passes and we trigger some development on King Street, the development will help pay for that infrastructure that zoning doesn't necessarily define, which are sidewalks and bike paths and crosswalks and traffic lanes, those are kind of things that we get as development occurs.
One of the comments I made about, you know, healthy food versus fast food, one of these, the traffic mitigation fee, because we're trying not to subsidize fast food restaurants, is the fee for traffic, for fast food restaurants is very high. So indirectly makes it really hard for some of us. Does it work?
Hello, Maureen Kearney, I'm the city councillor for Ward One, and I wanted to thank you all for hearing from folks tonight, especially thanks to Carolyn for coming to the meetings of Families with Power, for the couple of meetings that we had to discuss the zoning changes. And what I was struck by in those meetings was that despite the fact that the very points that Wayne just brought up about the differences between, you know, the, the zoning, zoning and the development functions of these, of these various boards, there's still a frustration that people have when they, when they understand that there's a development, you know, that there are zoning changes, and they have some certain concerns. And so it goes, it, it's very important that at least people be heard and that there is some way for those concerns to be expressed and possibly even incorporated, and I'm very happy to hear that there's gonna be a traffic signal as part of the development agreement with Colvest. And I, I don't know to what extent there's anything more concrete in the, in the zoning that, you know, in the previous, in the two thousand and two zoning, I know at least there were incentives, there was, there was a formula for calculating, you know, money that could be captured by the city. And I know that we're giving up some of that as a way to provide incentives to other developers. So if there's a way that there can be, you know, a better sense of what we do capture in the form of better access and better pedestrian safety, especially for butters, I'd be happy to see that. One of the most salient points I heard raised at these meetings was that the folks that, especially folks living at Hampshire Heights who have no vehicles, really do want to be part of the community, want as much as possible to be able to walk or ride their bikes or push strollers, you know, to be integrated into the community, and the limitations they have on access really create a separation that most of us in the community would like to see broken down. So I encourage, you know, any further discussion about that and just ways that, the, the one point also is that area of, it's a small section, but that one section of Bridge Road that goes from the corner of Jackson Street down to King Street, where there is a path already worn, you can see where, you know, hundreds, thousands of people have kind of walked through those grasses there, you know, there should, there really should be a sidewalk there. And, you know, I don't know where the funding source would come for that, or what the, what the means would be, but people will continue to walk down that dangerous path, and if there's a way that we can find some, some solution to that, something beyond saying that belongs to Mass Highway or that's the purview of public works, just having a conversation that will at least allow folks to hear that we're working on it. Thanks.
Question, we're not changing the traffic mitigation.
Right, so there's a, there is a formula in the zoning for traffic mitigation, highway business, it's, it, there are different thresholds, and as Wayne mentioned, the high impact, not only for vehicles, but also for health, like fast foods has higher mitigation fee. In the highway business district, no, there's no change to that. So in this section, I did mention that for the section south of the rail trail, because it would be rezoned out of highway business, then those parcels wouldn't be paying into the mitigation. And so I could see, for example, and, and so that's already in the zoning, the requirement that you accommodate pedestrian and bicycle access from the parcel, you know, connecting to the parcel, that's in the zoning. Essentially, that's why during the CVS permit process, there was a permit condition that they connect with a physical crosswalk to the Hampshire Heights. But all along, in fact, Walgreens, when that came in, we required the bike path connection to a dead end essentially as a holding pattern, because we figured that at some point, we're gonna get there and we're gonna be able to create access to the bike path itself. So that's in there as well, and I can see, as Cole Morgan turns over, you know, if there's traffic mitigation that, you know, you all have heard now, but where the tendrils that come into King Street need to be addressed, so Bridge Road and Cole Morgan, I see a strong relationship to that project as potentially a possibility.
My name is John Skibisky, and I own property up in upper North King Street, and I'm wondering in regards to that upper area between Hatfield Street and the market there, Co-op Market, are you still planning to have a sidewalk coming from, well, like Weber's Insurance all the way up to the Co-op? Is that still a part of this plan?
It's not part of the zoning plan, so this goes back to traffic mitigation issue. River Valley Market contributed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in traffic mitigation fees for their, you know, as part of that rezoning, and that money's being used from higher client bond, and they're designing, look at the intersection of Hatfield, North King Street, to put in hopefully a roundabout and possible signal to connect the sidewalk from River Valley Market up to Walmart and then up to Cook Avenue.
So that has nothing to do with your zoning proposal?
Right.
The sidewalk?
And just to be clear, all we have money for at this point is to do the design. It would then go into, it is eligible federal and state funds, so it would then go into It would then go into, it is eligible federal and state funds, so it would then go into a queue for funding.
Yeah.
But, but all this money we're talking about is really just to get to full design.
Alright.
But that makes us eligible and probably about a five or six year lead time.
My concern was that if that sidewalk is, goes along some eight hundred feet of my frontage, who's gonna maintain that? The city? Every time the snow, cloud comes by, covers the sidewalk, it has to be uncovered if you're gonna expect pedestrian traffic. And it's, it's almost an unrealistic assumption that that can be done.
I might, Mrs. Whistons, we're talking about something that's theoretically might happen in five years, and it's not part of the zoning itself.
Alright.
I might say that's a different discussion.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, anybody else in the vote? Great. So for the board, um, we have, so in three votes, the map change, entranceway business, highway business. We have the list of changes which Carolyn has described on the slide. And then we have the side that we'll review each other's, so all the comment sessions still open, we'll close that and deliberate. How do people wanna proceed? Do I have to meet in the side?
Yeah.
What I would say then is, unless there's more clarity we want for the public, I would say let's close the public hearing. Unless we need one at a time, with new central business, entranceway business, and King Street. And uh, so these are votes, recommend them to the City Council. Central Business doesn't really have any changes that we proposed. Entranceway Business, I think there were a couple of things, maybe Carolyn, uh, no, entranceway business, was there, the work?
Just remind you, because this is a, in essence legislative action you're doing instead of a permit action. What are you doing permits, once you close the public hearing, you can't hear from the public? Close the public hearing is the formal end of the process, but if somebody is some presser you feel you want to.
That's what legislative is, right?
So you're a little more flexible.
Is there a second? Alright, go ahead and second, any discussion? Jen, you have a question?
Sorry, no.
Pre-voting, all in favor? Alright, so the public session, the public hearing is closed, and Wayne said we can open it.
Hit actively, he's starting to get personal.
That's.
I trust we have great discussion.
Can you just remind me, I've lost the thread on where ordinance comes into this?
Ordinance, uh, so we met with them in the joint meeting last time. What they decided to do is rather than continuing to another joint meeting with us, they continued it to Tuesday.
Oh, right.
So they're being, this Tuesday, to do probably what they're gonna be, their recommendation. And from what I understand with Wade, um, the clock starts ticking ninety days from the day ordinance closes their public hearing. So the City Council has to vote or move on this within ninety days when ordinance closes their public hearing, it votes. Which takes us across into the new year. So these are gonna go to the City Council, and the hope is that the City Council will act on it before the end of this year.
Before the change.
Before the new change.
Right, before they come to. But for example, say they didn't.
They could carry it over.
They could carry it over, or if they do nothing in the ninety days, we could, we could reintroduce it. So it's, the, the clock's gonna start ticking on Tuesday, and the City Council has approximately two and a half months, assuming that they vote on. Yeah, right, but if they, if they do nothing, it, it just, there's a ninety day window from the eighteenth of October with ordinance.
Well, if they close the hearing.
Right, if they close their hearing. Right. So whenever ordinance closes, that's when the ninety days starts, that the City Council has to act on.
So just to clarify, there weren't any other text changes relative to the entranceway business? Yeah.
So let's do central business first. Give the map of the central business. So central business is solely the map change. We approved and moved on the zoning change for central business. So, uh, oh no, sorry.
Yeah, so that's the expansion of central business.
Any discussion on the expansion of central business? So is there a motion? So this is a motion to recommend, to do nothing, or to not recommend. It goes to City Council.
To recommend the map change, Joe.
Right, there's just a map change.
I'm going, I'm going to recommend that to the council, that they accept these changes to the central business.
Is there a second? No, no. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, so that's the central business map change. So entranceway business, there's been no text changes since the last time we met. So I would say, is there any discussion on entranceway business? So entranceway business continues up from central business up to the bike trail, including the old pond block. Flash, we can have the motion when we discuss it. So someone would like to make a motion on this one? Jen, I think you're sure.
Uh, I will make a motion to recommend that it's not the map change, it's the.
The approval entranceway business.
Well, it is a map change because it's from highway business to entranceway business. But I guess I would also say that package, it includes the new table with all the uses and all that that go along, and the design standards that go along with it.
Okay. So the map changes, the zoning changes, and the designing changes?
Right.
For entry, entranceway business.
I think we learned last time, after Carolyn speaks, we can always just say, so.
Right, yes.
Any discussion on entranceway business? Thank you for any here.
Well, I, I just, I sort of briefly wanted to readdress the, the, the kind of law, the, the, we're ever gonna get two stories, you know, this thing, and you like this.
And I, I think, you know, we've talked about this, my, my thought was the, the, the extension of, of, of central business out, as far as we did, which has the, the, the height requirement, and this has, the twenty foot, entranceway business has twenty foot plus design guidelines. So, I think that was.
What's the, what's the requirement of the highway business?
Twenty feet, no second story.
Required for a second story, or?
No, it allows, but it allows, you know, to six feet.
Right. Is it, is that, you said twenty feet up there, is it also twenty feet? Entranceway is?
Yes, twenty feet.
Okay, the same.
Yeah. It's the same in highway and entrance.
Right. With design, the design guidelines, so we don't get the flat roof.
Right. But the difference in entrance is they'll be closer to the street.
Right, they have to be much closer to the street than. In fact, there's no parking in front of those, the traffic is.
That building, saying none of the buildings there. Good example.
The ones down here are all single story. These are all single story, pretty much.
Yeah.
On the, but on the, on the west side, it is a nice story. On the west side, those are mostly second.
I'm on the east side, and I don't think why it really counts.
What does it? Which one goes building to the old pond for sure?
The second.
The second or the third?
It's the third one.
Third, third. That's the hardware store. Oh, they used to be gold. Alright, we digress. So I'm gonna fix that up. So we have a motion in a second, we've had a discussion. Are we ready to vote? Alright, all in favor? All opposed? I'm, I'm here, okay. Alright, alright, so entranceway business, the path to recommendations. So now we have uh, King Street, where we have to, give the slide, Carolyn, with the, the changes.
I have the map, and I just have these other graphics. Oh, well, I have the, yeah, I'll do this by, uh, the design standards.
And the one column before we, we talk about this one is, I know we heard a lot tonight about infrastructure, traffic light sidewalks, crosswalks, and I think what's important to remember is those are the infrastructure changes. You can use zoning to get, to promote the development for the creation of those, you know, traffic mitigation or that we do in the Industrial Park, or we do at River Valley Market, where we're requiring developers to put in sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signals, as we did with Coal Vest at the old Price Chopper. But those aren't necessarily zoning, so, zoning, uh, zoning. I think we're all in standard of negotiation. Do you wanna go over those?
Yeah, the changes. So, um, so this first section of the design standards, the proposed changes would be to um, delete the requirement that you provide this um, flanked um, buffer sidewalk for both bike path access and sidewalk. And I think the intention was never to say you're, you know, connecting from the bike path and the sidewalk, so it's one or the other. So the idea would be just to delete that highlighted text in public bike path. Down below at the bottom of the paragraph, uh, is the just, um, addition of the language relative to an incentive for low-impact design standards for stormwater management, so that you could reduce the buffer width of eight feet on each side of that main spine of a sidewalk to six feet, if you do, if you're proposing um, low-impact design standards for stormwater. And um, uh, staff, I, I think that's a valid way to provide incentives, because I don't think we're really gonna get, we, we're not required yet to do any of these sort of new technologies for stormwater management. So I think that'd be good incentive. The reason is it adds additional parking space, so that's the incentive for the developer by dropping that width. Um, the other thing that came up in that discussion, I think, um, Councilor Freeman Daniels had suggested, what if you wanna do an eight-foot wide sidewalk, instead of a six feet, and then you can have a bike head spine going in? I think that it's a valid um, suggestion as well, as a means to draw, to narrow the buffer width. So that's what the red box is, um, you know, we could add text that says, you know, either LID or an eight-foot wide sidewalk, or multi-use lock, would allow you to reduce your buffer width on that one. So that's that. Then going to the next page, there, we dropped this graphic um, showing landscaping between a building and its joining sidewalk. And also the language that required that, and that, it was again, sort of a holdover from the focus on retail establishments, so it didn't really make sense to add that extra dimension on a building within a property to have a required six-foot deep um, landscaping belt between the building and sidewalk. So that's that one. And um, the glazing section, um, again, this, uh, the original standard from 2002 was targeted at large-scale retail establishments. So the language here is clarifying that the buildings that are on the sidewalks, um, are facing, um, at the public sidewalk, should have a certain amount of glazing, but the buildings that are set back beyond the buffer can be reduced, the amount of glazing can be reduced and to forty percent versus sixty percent, acknowledging that some of these buildings are gonna be office, banks, or other establishments that aren't gonna um, be designed with um, a large wall that's um, primarily blocks. So I would recommend that you incorporate that change. And then that's it for the design piece of it, but the text then had um, changes um, that included the um, deletion of the reference to cycle track in eleven point five three, and I can go to that on the screen if you want, but also the clarification of the drive-through language, so those are the, and then adding the um, limitation of prohibition on retail over ninety thousand square feet. So those three things for the actual HB text.
Can you take that burger again?
Yeah, it's gonna go to the actual sections. So um, this is the ten sixteen, the drive-through establishments. And the idea is just to clarify that, um, the concern is that we're not creating, the principal use isn't the drive-through use on that site, but that it's really an accessory to other functions on a site, and that's when it would be allowed by special permit. That's that change. And um, there's a change regarding cycle tracks, actually, I think it's. Eleven five B three, this language, um, about adding, eliminating the word cycle track in this section, because that's the, this is really talking about onsite improvements, and um, we're, so we're talking about sidewalks and bike paths on the private side, and the cycle track terminology is really intended for the King Street right of way, not the private side. And then the other piece is just in the table, adding back this in red, retail above ninety thousand square feet requirement is not allowed.
There's a typo in the, in the recommendation, and also on the screen.
Oh, okay.
There's an HB design standard highlight, it's P, P point, was it point B, P point one, one O, on this sheet. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't in the other document. So this buffer, this buffer may be reduced to six feet on either side, if, and an eight-foot wide, it should be and an eight-foot wide.
Okay. So it's in here. Oops, this section?
I don't know where, where it is, I mean.
The sidewalk that's. Oh, okay, so it's just the text chain, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know whether you just copied it from there or not.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay, it's kind of modeled.
It's a P, yeah, it's a P, yeah, it's a copy.
Carolyn, the sidewalk that's in front of the power station is six feet, three feet, yeah?
I think it's six, yeah.
I ride my bike, I'm on King Street, and so I'm on there regularly, and if a pedestrian doesn't know that you're behind them, I mean, you could pass if, if you know of each other, but you can't if you don't, and so that might be a reason why it's a concern.
Along King Street you're talking about? I think the idea is ultimately, and we still haven't fleshed this out as a community, about what kind of design changes we want for the corridor itself, within the street right of way. But I think the idea is that we're separating, the goal is to separate pedestrians from cyclists.
And you really think we'll get to the cycle track?
Well, sure, that's the vision. I, I don't, but.
Here I am forgetting that we, we want to put the cycle track on the lane and keep them off, but in the decade intervening, that's not gonna be what happens.
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree, we have a, we have a big lag time before we get to that goal.
Any other questions or comments on King Street, highway business?
My only thought was that it's a long lead time, or lag time, as Carolyn said, but jumping ahead twenty or fifty years, and we end up with this model where we've got a cycle track on King Street, and the corridor that we've been talking about forever, functionally it works, and it, and it's pedestrian-friendly. And so that corridor works, and then to get from that corridor to, to the retail establishments, that works. And that's all pedestrian-friendly, and, and everything works in harmony. But getting to the corridor, all that we've heard about, the only complaints mostly are getting to the corridor. So we talked about traffic mitigation, and depending on the, the use of the building, the mitigation fees might be. the mitigation fees might be, if you're generating more traffic, the fees are bigger. But are they tied into, right now if you abut a residential area, we've got a 30-foot buffer, like a planting buffer, are mitigation fees tied into where your parcel is? So if it, if it abuts a residential area, that the mitigation fees are higher for that particular, you know, no matter what you do or how much traffic you generate, just the fact that you're next to, you know what I mean?
No, I mean, the buffer is this, is sort of the mitigation. So it's not a traffic mitigation, but it's a physical, sort of a barrier mitigation. Traffic mitigation can be used anywhere beyond the property. The idea about traffic mitigation is off-site traffic mitigation. You still have to do stuff in front of your property, still have to do your sidewalk and all that stuff. And then there's this off-site traffic mitigation requirement. So it could be used to address deficiencies on the streets coming into King Street. If that's where it looks like, you know, that's where the deficiency is. So it doesn't necessarily have to be right in front of the building or one block down.
So the old Honda place is redeveloped and we get our sidewalks in front and everything's nice and neat. But we can take that in traffic mitigation and apply it to the intersection of Damon Road and Bridge Road.
Except that there won't be traffic mitigation for the old Honda because the idea is, the idea is...
Oh, that, that is...
Right. But, but anywhere else, north of the rail trail, right. So we got Wal, for instance, here's an example. We got money from Walgreens. Some of that is going to the intersection at North Street, the design for the North Street interchange and the whole, we had BH...
So it just goes in a traffic mitigation pot and we can use that money wherever?
We can, but we, the goal is to try to use it where the greatest impact is within, you know, a distance, so.
Because in general, my, I have no issue after vetting this forever. And I'm comfortable with what we ended up with, with the corridor, going up and down the street and getting people from that sidewalk to the building. I think that all works. And if, in passing this or recommending it, we can enhance the tendril access that we talked about today. I don't know what we can do, but if we can do something along those lines, I'd be excited for it.
Yeah, I don't think, again, I don't think it's a zoning issue beyond the traffic mitigation. But I do think that it's important information to have. So as moving forward and we hear about these projects that come, we can say, well, you know what? We know there are issues getting to King Street and therefore when the, as the development comes along, we can maybe start, and it goes to traffic, parking and transportation. I think city councils need to hear it. I think the mayor needs to hear it. I think, you know, the committees that work on the design and for the streets need to hear that and understand that so that as we're developing policy and developing design standards for those streets, all of that is kept in mind.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Remind me, with the church, we did prevail on being the access out the back of the bike path.
It's still...
Getting sued, but we have...
But yes, we are...
That's what I want to bring up here then, because should we right up front, you know, say that we are interested in that? Is there any way to do that? Because that's what we were hearing today. You're wanting more than just front door access to these businesses.
Well, the zoning does say that. And in fact, some of this text here, I can go to, it says, you need to connect. If you're abutting a bike path, you have to connect. The zoning does say that. The other thing I want to bring up is this issue of sort of sharing access points. The church is a good example where the permit actually said, you either connect directly or figure out some other mechanism. Maybe it's with your neighbor to connect a bike path. So in fact, I, we believe they are working with the abutter to create a joint project to connect to the bike path. And then that still brings access to the church property, but the access isn't exactly on the property. And that's just as good as having it directly if you're sharing it.
Yeah, no, it's...
So sharing is allowed.
It's a matter of the opening that I'm interested in. The one other thing I just, this week was a meeting talking about transportation to the Silverstone Center. We do not have a bus that goes by the Silverstone Center. So that is a walking issue for people to get to in front of it.
It's a good thing it's around the bike path. That's the other direction, right? I mean, that's, that's all sidewalks, all the way up Jackson Street.
They're sidewalks.
Public bus.
They're carrying their groceries.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but bus, I mean, that's not even close to...
Well, I know this is not directly related to the zoning issue that we're talking about, but it seems to me that, is there an overall, it seems like there should be some overall plan connecting these developments with hundreds of people in them to businesses on King Street. And it seems to me it would be good business. And then is there an overall plan or design or even a sketch on the back of an afternoon? Or not?
No, I mean, I think the overall, the big vision is we need, we've been pushing for sidewalks and crosswalks on Damon Road because River Run is isolated. It is an island and we know that. And so the big picture is for at least the 10 years, 11 years that I've known about it, we've been pushing to have the Damon Road design change to incorporate sidewalks and crosswalks and that way get people to King Street because that's where the services and businesses are that are walkable and accessible that way. And then from the other side, I think, I think, and within the zoning, it says, you know, connect to adjoining properties. The one issue is there's also that conflict of residential against commercial and wanting to create a buffer. So there's that weighing, you know, some people want to have the clear, but there are other ways to get to it. You don't necessarily have to have the connection through the property, but the sidewalk connection. So down Bridge Road that was discussed. I mean, that would be another way to get people from the Hampshire Heights community, even from further up Bridge Road down to...
I mean, it just seemed to me that if we had some sort of a sense of what it might look like, big picture, that as businesses came to us for permits, we would, you know, have a better idea of what we might ask them for. Just a thought.
Yeah, sometimes we ask them, oh, sorry. Well, sometimes we ask them for specific things like, you know, as we've done.
Yeah, that's...
But oftentimes we don't have, because if the goal of getting the money, getting enough money together to do that.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
You know, we have enough money to do a design right now of dumping donuts. But we don't, that's what we're doing the sign for.
That and also the Heffield intersection. So North Street, Summer Street, King.
We're doing a design for Dunkin' Donuts?
No, for the street. Intersection in front of...
I thought we could do something a little...
Not the one downtown.
Any other questions on this one? So the recommendation, or the motion has to include the recommendation as well as the changes to the table zoning and the design guidelines. Is that correct? No map changes?
Right, no map changes in this section.
Wes and Tom, yeah.
This is a hard one.
Yeah.
Well, Carolyn can say it, one of you can say.
What you could say, you know, so I would summarize it as the highway business package of changes, which includes the table and dimensional changes plus the design standards and the associated site plan approval requirements with the modifications since its introduction.
I have to repeat that?
No, you decide so.
I moved, we adopt the highway business, recommend to city council the highway business with the averbage, Carolyn averbage.
That was a pun. All right, any further discussion on this one? Are all in favor? All right, you have it. Thank you, everybody. That was two years. And it's not done yet. It's not done yet. Are you guys from Coke? Are you guys from Coke?
No.
Oh, okay. We don't have any to go to Coke?
No, I told them they didn't need to come.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what do you, I had a few hard copies of the site plan changes for Coca-Cola. And I emailed you, the gist of the change is that they, I guess, when they originally proposed moving the guardhouse, which is sort of the checkpoint for both the eighteen-wheelers that are coming in to pick up as well as any other visitors that might be going to the facility in automobiles, that was one centralized location. And by, if they were to move the guardhouse to check the eighteen-wheelers in, then it would essentially allow a place for cars can just buy and not do the official check-in. So they really didn't want to move the guardhouse. They understand the issue of wanting to make sure those trucks are off of industrial drive as quickly as possible. So they've come up with a management solution whereby they have a sign that will direct the trucks to just keep moving forward past the guardhouse. And they have a place for three side-by-side, I think, to be stationed. Is that what the site plan shows? And then four backed up behind it. They sometimes have three tractor-trailers coming in at once. That's not a regular occurrence. They certainly don't have seven, but they've shown seven, the consultant said that seven would be an incredibly abnormal number of tractor-trailers to ever come on the site all at one time. But they have the capacity to pull seven in off of industrial drive at once. So what they would like is approval from you all that this is a satisfactory means of accomplishing the same thing, which is getting their trucks off of industrial drive as quickly as possible.
So they would wave them all in, tell them to wait to get tracked in?
Yeah, there'll be a stop bar and then they'll go out.
Is it a physical bar, like a physical stop bar? Or is it just a painted line?
Just painted line. And then they'll have signage right at the guardhouse telling them what to do, you know, to move forward to that line and then the person will get out and, you know.
The only thing I can think of is that it abuts the bike path. And so if you have a lot of trucks idling there, that could be really gross.
But they have them idling at some point anyway.
That would have been, they would idle almost the same place to the guard shack, would have been right here.
Right, right, you're right.
Well, I'd say you are subject to the law about how long they can idle.
Yeah, I think it's really a matter of a few minutes and then they move on into the log and...
I never understood why they wanted to change it before because if you were driving there in a car, you had to go around. It'd be silly. Makes sense to me that you would change.
When they expand, are they, are you confident that their estimate of their number of trucks stacking up is wrong?
They're done.
They're done.
They're waiting for their final CO and they can't get their CO till you all sign off on this piece because this was part of the site plan approval. And since they hadn't moved it, we said, oh, wait a second, your shack is in the right place.
Your shack.
Your house, your little mini house.
So it's not like they moved it, now they're moving your pack. They never moved it.
Right.
You called them on it and they just want to leave it where it is.
Well, I want to move that, please, accept their proposal. As your question, approve it, I mean.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I would say Mark and Franny and I did have a chance to do a tour. I think we were all invited, but some people couldn't make it. It was very, very interesting. It was a very cool operation.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. Yeah, you would, you understood two...
That was like a year ago.
Yeah, I mean, they were very friendly. They were, they must have spent two hours with us.
It was a lot.
It was a lot.
Something like that, shower caps, earplugs.
That's right, that's right.
Did you get to actually...
Nice.
Yeah, we did.
They actually exceeded their job expectancy.
I saw them, they exceeded the job. I mean, it was really an interesting tour. I was, I was impressed. All in favor? All right, thank you. No, not quite chickens yet. Home business. I wasn't here for this, so.
So just to remind everyone, I don't know how, I don't know if I put this in the staff memo, but at the last meeting you all moved, there were two dissensions, I think, from that, moving as recommended, coming out of discussions prior to that, the home occupation, the home business modifications. Sort of thinking about it more and the discussion was about the complexity of it, trying to figure out what were the vehicle trips and how do you count trips and all of that. So I guess at a staff level, we felt like even though there was a unanimous majority recommendation to move the ordinance forward as an ordinance to city council, we took another stab at it to see if it might address some of the issues I know that Marilyn and Franny had with, with the complexity of the language. So the ordinance in front of you is modified by eliminating the allowance for employees and also calculating the number of allowed trips by the actual visits and not by counting vehicle trips, vehicle round trips. And the rationale behind that is really to say, well, if you're a home business, the idea is that you're invisible. And once you start having employees, that, that takes it a little bit beyond the step of just having sort of your own home business, that you might be seeing clients, you might see people occasionally. And that maybe that really still needs to stay in special permit. And then with the registration process with the building commissioner, you still, you know, with five visits, say you want to have, see five clients to do massage or what have you. Or if you're working on some new innovative iPhone 8 and you need to see, consult with somebody a few times a week. Then you could do that, but you have to register with the building department and say, here's my anticipated visits per day and per week. So that there is still that mechanism to evaluate that. And so I just put that forward. You guys can decide that you don't want to take it up again because you already voted to move it forward under the previous language or open it up for discussion again.
So I wasn't here for the last one, so I guess I'll leave it to you guys. So the big change is change the way you count traffic. If you have employees, it's special permit. And the other special permit criteria are hours of operation outside 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., two or more studios, outdoor storage. How long do you guys feel, does this feel better than the last one?
So, say that again. So if you have employees, your special permit. But the visits are five...
There's no more than five per day?
Five days, like five weeks.
My initial reaction is five days, five visits per day isn't very many. What kind of visits do you envision would fall under this? I mean, you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't have a social worker or something like that seeing only five clients a day?
Yeah.
And I figure at a point it would be in an hour.
Yeah, it could be music lessons. It could be, we have, we've done, the zoning board and the city have approved, the city has approved through the zoning board, psychotherapy, massage therapists, whatever kind of therapy you can even imagine that is in North Hampton at those little thresholds. Some people just say, I don't want to see more than two people a day. Some people say, I want to see eight people a day and it's, you know, seven to eight or whatever. And that's then the special permit allowance. Or if there's been an issue with the neighborhood, about that much, maybe the zoning board says, well, you can't have eight per day, but you can have five per day. Or some people who have, want to have the flexibility and have two on one day and five on another day. I mean, that's, that's pretty, five isn't the maximum, but it certainly isn't the lowest number that we've seen through special permit.
Does anyone feel that we should apply to certain zones in the city and not others? It's just all been zoned by that.
And citywide, so this is, this will be citywide.
I mean, citywide.
It's essentially for the residential districts, not the commercial districts.
Well, see, that's why I was favoring, if you're going to, you know, have people come to your house for any reason, a special permit because I think it's very different in very dense neighborhoods with no parking. So I don't see that all businesses are created equal in that sense. So it would give neighbors a chance to buy through the special permit process. It would give the community the chance or the neighbors a chance to say why they think they're not bothered by it at all or why they think they are. they're not bothered by it at all or why they think they are. If you do it by right.
So you're saying a special permit for any customer, any business?
So you're saying keep it as it is essentially?
That's, that was what I, that was my thinking last, last week, yes.
And you, and so your, your home business means no, no external business if you do a special permit?
You can do it, you'd have to get a special permit. You'd be through the special.
If you have customers or if you're a home business regardless?
If you have customers coming to your house.
But if you're, so you're, but if you're your lawyer, your client, your customers, if you're a massage therapist, your client. So, so what I'm saying is anybody coming to it.
Yeah, any customers coming to your house. That creates traffic. That creates traffic and parking problems, yeah.
And that's what we have now, right? And so you're advocating for that as well?
Right.
Well, I'm.
That was my thinking last.
My thinking on it is in this economy, fostering better use of buildings in our town that are, you know, you're already living there, you could run a small business. And I think there's some pretty green reasons for trying to promote home business for commute. You know, that's, that's someone who's not making two trips a day in and out to go to another job. And I agree, I don't want to, I like the change better than what we had it because this is, this is a smaller step in, in that direction. So I'm for the change. But I am also for home businesses, but we'll hear, that's, we'll hear problems about, you know, the next door effect. But it doesn't sound, I mean, everyone wants to live right next door to something really quiet, not anything else. And so, you know, I, I, it doesn't seem excessive that people run up and down my street all the time.
Well, pretty good.
Well, I, I don't want to appear anti-home business because I'm not and I do understand and I think that, I don't know, as a planning board member, I always try to weigh, you know, what's, you know, best for the community and the neighbors and the, you know, and if, and sometimes it's close.
Yeah.
This is one.
And for me, this one is like, hmm. But I can see in some areas of the city that, I mean, I used to live downtown and near Broad Street School and I can tell you when school, when people were dropping their kids off, a lot of people were inconsiderate. They'll park right in front of your driveway or so that you can't, you know, back out. And it creates problems. I know when I was a counselor, people on streets like Graves Avenue, dead end with no parking, people parked there that walked downtown. I mean, it would be a horrendous place to have a home business and it would limit neighbors from, you know, parking on the street because a lot of those houses don't have parking. So I, I just, I, I think it's fine in some cases and clearly could be bothersome in others. And that's why I like the special permit process because it gives neighbors a chance to express their feelings.
Yeah, I, I have to continue my agreement.
So a special permit for anything over, any, any business?
Any business.
What if like FedEx or a service guy or something like that doesn't count? You know, deliveries, but customer visits, that's what, that's the, that's the threshold, that's the reason.
Well, you can run a eBay business trading on eBay without having any customers come in.
Right, but you may have FedEx coming by at some time.
Right, you generate more traffic, yeah, but that is not controlled.
Right, and that's also not part of, FedEx can also drop, it's a five minute, you know, it's a drop.
They dominate.
Right, they're coming down, that's, that's dropping on the street. Anybody else on this one? Oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, I think I can agree with you. I think the positive is out there. I think it's partly the issue of the decision of the person who is thinking about having a home business to assess what the street is like and what would be possible to, you know, to expect in terms of customers.
Right, that's a good point. We talk about this on King Street all the time. You know, would anybody put a business up on King Street with no parking? Probably not.
That was part of the discussion the last time that you missed, to the public comment discussion.
That's what I was going to say, along those lines. I, I think this is a, a nice incremental step and I like it, I like the changes that were made. I, I think it's overly burdensome to, to require a special permit if you have any customers. I think five trips a day is, is, is not a tremendous amount of traffic. And my thinking is if you live on a lousy street parking wise, then maybe you're, you'll have second thoughts if I want to open a home business and I can't even find a, when my friend comes over to park, they can't even find a spot to park. But maybe that's not a good place to have a home business. I don't think you're going to make, you're not going to make it any worse if it's already bad. And I don't think five trips a day is going to make a good situation a bad situation. So I, I'm in favor of it. I, I think it's a, it's a small step, just like going from four to eight chickens instead of four.
Well, don't talk chickens.
Not yet.
Well, so we have, we have three options here. We could, we, you guys' last meeting moved ahead the version of this that's already in the pipeline. So we could do nothing. We could.
Excuse me, is it in the pipeline or did it stall out and you begin?
We stalled it out.
Yeah.
Well, but if we do nothing, it.
Right.
Unstalls.
Right.
We could move ahead with this, the primary change being the five visits and anyone with that being a special permit. Or we could modify this in some way. It sounds like Marilyn and Franny are of one opinion. I think I am of all in the lines of agreement with Mark and definitely Catherine.
Well, I see, I, you make the primary issue the transportation, but I think not having an employee is a big change.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we always can hook up on traffic, right. But so this is, the other change is no employee. Right, any employee requires a special permit.
Right, I, I think the changes are positive. I just don't think, I mean, especially the no employees and the number of, I just don't think it's overly burdensome for a special permit. It's a pain in the butt, but it's, it's not really burdensome compared to having a.
But for, for us, we've been seeing some special permits all the time, but for somebody who's.
I just think they aren't doing it, it's my bad.
Right, a accountant, oh, you gotta pay the board, pay the money and spend work, it's a little scary.
Well, there might be better value in putting down the expectations for what it would mean if you were going to run a business from home instead of just running under the radar.
We encourage it, but encourage it with these kinds of constraints.
Well, I think, Jen, unless you went away and I think.
Well, you had another, your options were.
Oh, one is do nothing. That means we have one in the pipeline, two, adopt it as it's written, three, modify what Carolyn has presented us. There are no further modifications. The further modifications that we had were Frandy and Marilyn's idea for five to zero. I think you both are in favor of special permit for employees, right? You guys are both in favor of that?
No, we're, I think we're in favor of special permits for home businesses.
Period. Oh, so you got, I mean, any home business, you want a special permit? Because what we're talking about.
Where someone sees, where, where there's clients coming to the house. That's what they're saying.
That's two different things.
Right, that's two different things. You're saying you want a special permit for home business, for these customers?
What's, what's the system that there is now? What, what, does it exist now?
If you're seeing any clients or, yeah, employees, it requires a special permit.
I didn't catch it.
Any, any kind of client visit or employees who don't reside in the home require a special permit.
Yeah, that's, I like what we have now.
Yeah.
Because it gives the public the opportunity to weigh in.
Well, we have not been, scrap all this home business changes and leave it in the zoning way just then. Does anybody have now?
Yeah, that's what she meant.
Yeah.
That's, that's, no, but I guess the fourth option, I guess we could, we could do that. We could rescind the vote you guys did a couple of weeks ago, which moved the old version of the changes forward. So I guess what I would say is, I think we've all expressed our opinion on how we feel about this. I, I let's somebody throw a motion out and it will resolve.
Is this another one of those recommendations to the council?
This is a recommendation to the city council?
No, this is, this is, would be, you would be sponsoring an ordinance. So we would draft it as an ordinance coming from the planning board based on zoning provisions, committing recommendations for this change. So then it would be introduced to city council. It wouldn't come out for public hearing until.
That's true.
The next council.
Would come back to us again?
Yeah, for public hearing.
Oh, yeah, it would come back with, because we think. Actually, before we do a motion, I should say, are, are members of the public here for the home business or the chicken?
Home business.
Okay. Do you guys like to?
Can you put this question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, how, how many special permits are in existence for home business now, plus or minus?
Well, let me do it another way. We probably do four-ish a year. So it's been in existence for about fifteen years now. Yeah, I just had a.
Can you say you may have a dress?
Oh, I'm sorry. Eileen Hirsch, I live on Massasoit Street.
I, I can't hear you.
Eileen Hirsch. And I live on Massasoit Street. So I, I did have questions about where, so it sounds like it's the whole city. So the home business will happen like the whole city, so like, can you give, so all the wards, like one, one for seven?
Residential areas?
Oh, residential districts.
Right.
Because in the commercial districts, you're allowed to do business.
So that's like ward one, two, three, four.
All the wards have residential districts.
Right, you're probably, you are A, you are B, you are senior and you are B, so.
Okay, okay. So I guess, you know, I understand the economics of the situation, but I, I disagree when you said you can't make bad situations worse if they're already bad in terms of the traffic. Because I think that, I agree with Fran and Marilyn in terms of, I think it's slippery slope. And I think, you know, the things that were cited in the paper in terms of why you would do, why you would open home business and open it up and deregulate it is because one of the reasons was obviously the economics out there. Number two, you have neighbors pitting one against another at the hearings. But I think what I worry about is because we have traffic calming issues on Massasoit Street, on many streets, and I was talking to people that live all in different parts of the city and have concerns about the parking. And, you know, I think that you're counting on people to be considerate and thoughtful of their neighbors and I can tell you, not everybody is. And so when you deregulate and then you have to pull back or have neighbors start complaining or counting, I think it's slippery slope. And I think Marilyn is right by saying that neighbors, you know, I didn't move somewhere with this, with, with home business deregulated. Then all of a sudden, it starts happening around you, not tomorrow, not next week, maybe not next month, but slowly, things will change. And then, you know, I think that if you, you're in a situation where you could at least have something to say about it, at least have your voice heard is better than not. And I think it's better than backtracking. And, you know, we're all fighting over those temporary speed bumps because we're going to have a meeting next weekend about Massasoit Street, stuff going on there. So I, and I know there's many other streets where there's cut throughs and Crescent Street's very tight and certain areas. So I also agree with maybe there's certain areas of the city where it's a little more open and allowable for this kind of thing. And that's something to think about too. And you're saying that this is an incremental step, but I think it's bigger than incremental. I think an incremental step would be, like Fran mentioned, looking at certain areas that would be more amenable to traffic and cars. Because certain areas are better than others. And then I also think too, it gives, if certain businesses start setting up, then each one that comes, excessive one, at least you have this permit process. So you can say, okay, well, we have this situation now going on. So now we have four, four businesses in this area. Can we take on another one? It just gives you a chance to reassess. Make the permitting process easier and I don't know if, or cheaper. Yeah, it's $200, make it 50. You know, make it more economically accessible for people. Or just try to make it so, I don't know, that's probably hard because there's probably a process and you can't help the three months or whatever, two to three months that it takes. But I'm just in favor and I know I've talked to a lot of people who are in favor of keeping a process in there. I think there's many people are, have home businesses now. And we know people, many people have home businesses. But if they're under the radar, once you open it up, it's just going to be, I, I think it's going to be more than you, you bargained for. That's right. And, and also I wonder if there's any other place, what I tried to look up, if there was any other place that has done the zoning that you guys are going to do in sort of a similar town. And I, all I got when I Googled was Houston, Texas, but I know it's going to be other. Because they, you know, they sort of do it all in.
They don't have zoning in Houston.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's, right, that's what some guy told me.
Turn your house into a bar.
Right, that's, and, and I guess the whole idea about. What's that?
Poor church.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what another zoning person said. There's like no zoning in Houston. So it's not a good comparison for any place. But, but, so again, like allowing it to happen, you don't want to say, no, you can't do this. But still having some process still allows some, you know, some way to kind of regulate it. So it's, so neighbors don't feel like after the fact, then the county and the cars and this and that. It's just, I just think that you might regret it, but that's my thought. Okay? Thanks for listening.
I don't have a lot to say. I'm part of Rewind of Dubec and I live on Massasoit Street as well. And I'm opposed to taking away the permitting process for all the reasons that Eileen just mentioned, for the things that you said, Marilyn. And the one thing I want to say is that seasonally, when there's an accumulation of snow, as we had last winter, if you put more traffic into the mix on a street like my street, but I know that Crescent is worse and over on South Street, so many of the streets, the small streets, it, it could be difficult. And if you get just one or two people on a small street deciding to have a home business, I know the last thing in the world I would want to do is complain about my neighbor. I would never, ever want to be put in a position to count cars and then to go and have to say, I'm sorry, so-and-so living next door to me, but I'm going to go and report that you have 20 cars a day and not five. It just would be a terrible environment and climate for us to have here in the city. Thank you.
Just because you're both from Massasoit, I'm on the Transportation and Parking Commission and your, Lou's application comes before us on Tuesday.
Okay.
But I will say we've been measuring the speed of the traffic there and it's coming in surprisingly calm.
Really?
Thirty, thirty, thirty miles an hour at the 85th percentile. So I don't see that as being. I, I don't want to speak for the whole commission, but I, I, we were, we were surprised.
It was up for a week, wasn't it?
It was.
Right in front of my house, actually.
We waited until school started before we, you know, to put it up so that it would be pretty close to what we deal with. But, all right, thank you.
Well, that was one week.
And it's shocking because people are.
Yeah.
Well, I'd also like to say, why couldn't we make the special permit process easier and cheaper, but keep the process? And I don't know if we have, if we can do that, but I guess that's an ordinance.
Well, I mean, there's a cost to everything, you know. So the reason why the permit process is $200 is there's. You know, at some point, the.
I don't think the city's turning the problem up.
Yeah.
I get you.
So, but, but in terms of the, and also the time, it's a statutory requirement. If you have social permit, you have to advertise it, you have to notify the owners, you have to have it, you know, an appeal period. So in North Hampton, the process is very much condensed to the point that it, you know, in most communities, it doesn't take two and a half to three months to get a permit. It takes six months, nine months, 12 months. I mean, the state was issuing incentives for cities to try to approve permits in six months or less. Like, well, sure, we can apply for that money because we never take six months to approve permits.
Just a clarification, though, it would be Louis who would be going out and counting cars, right?
Yeah, but if.
If you thought there were too many cars on your street, you wouldn't be the person confronting the business owner.
But, but we do, I mean, the whole city system, and we don't go, the, the city, the building department doesn't go out looking for violations.
Right.
People call and complain, then there's a follow-up. So I think that's, you know, the issue.
And check out Island Road if you want to know a nightmare of neighbors and counting cars and.
Right, sorry. Well, Mark?
Yeah, cause one's feeling expected to retire.
Yeah.
I was going to say, if you, if you don't see any customers, do you, do we, do they have to register with home business? So all those people that are flying under the radar now, which we know, you know, we have four special permits a year. We know that 99% of the home businesses in Hampton are under the radar.
Or they may not be seeing clients. You might have a home business where you don't see, or if you, all the music teachers out there who don't have a special.
Well, I'm saying, should we, should we?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so start calling the building.
Well, I was saying, my next door neighbor who taught music to my daughter for years, she had clients all the time and I know she didn't.
I was saying, should we advocate some that you still allow by right, but you have to register? I was saying, should we advocate some that you still allow by right, but you have to register? Just so we know that there's home business, or four home businesses on this street, or whatever.
Well, this provision is to register with the building department to say, okay, I wanna register my home business, and I'm anticipating having two people a day.
Well, I'm saying, for those people who don't, who don't have clients, I mean, do we, is there any need to?
No, we had, we started, that was the very first baby step. We said, if you wanna have a home business, not that you even see anybody, but you have to file with the building department. We got rid of that. And so the people who aren't seeing anybody, they don't have to come.
Do they need a business license?
No, not necessarily, it depends on what kind of business they're doing. If they're not really conducting, you know, some people are doing stuff international.
They're kill marketing. Yeah, they just don't write books. Virgil.
Sure, the whole business in your house, it's on nobody, you would know.
We care.
I mean, I know, I know a lawyer that practices out of her house, but she doesn't see clients at her house.
There are lots of people who do have some, right? So this whole thing always comes down to traffic. Every discussion we've ever had about.
Well, it's so frustrating to sit on TPC and hear these very complex coming week after week, and we really can't, I mean, the ability to fix them is expensive. You know, we know how to fix them, but the city doesn't have the ability, you know, street narrowing and, and.
Well, the other thing, though, is say, say, my next-door neighbor started a home business and started seeing people.
Started what?
Started seeing clients.
Yeah.
So I'd have to rat them out, just, I would have to call the building inspector to have them, just like we would have to do here. There's not really no difference.
Is this hypothetical?
It's hypothetical, my next-door neighbor's not running.
What piano, played, P G Pio?
I don't.
Scramble off.
Scrambled me off all that noise. No, the, no, so, right, so if this is, if we're worried about enforcement, if we're worried about neighbors having to call out neighbors, that's exactly where we are today. Somebody opens a home business today and starts seeing people, neighbors have to call the building inspector. If we enact this, you have a home business, you see less than five, or fewer than five cars a day. Same thing, if the neighbor thinks there's more, the neighbors are gonna have to make the phone call. There's, I don't see that big a difference.
That's what I'm, I mean, right now, if Mrs. Smith is next door, all of a sudden, one or two cars are there a day, and you're like, hey, what's going on, Mrs. Smith's house, she has a business, like, say you call in, say, they're not, are they registered, or whatever. Now, instead of one or two cars, we're talking about five. Which to me, over the course of, you know, ten-hour day, I just don't, I don't see the impact if, if, right, we have four special permits a year over the whole city. I just don't see.
Well, there may not be an impact on some streets, but if you, say, say you live in a neighborhood where there's only parking, say you only have a driveway that one car fits in, and you're, you know, your second car is, has to park on the street, and then people come in and take that spot, I mean, that's what happens on a street like Graves.
But on, but on the other side, though, I mean, just look at it from the other side, actually, when people come in for special permits, often the issue is if you live in more of an in-town area, it's less visible, because there's activity anyway in the neighborhood. Whereas if you're out in the suburbs, out on the streets, out west of Florence Road, people might notice more of that activity more, even though the streets are, you know, wider and can accommodate the cars. So there's that side of it, but the other piece of it, too, is people go, leave their house for work typically, that's sort of the traditional work environment. So in a neighborhood, most people are leaving to go somewhere else during the day. So that would be the time in which clients would be coming to that home business. So in terms of, you know, buying for parking spaces, it may be offset at different times.
Unless you live in a neighborhood where people park there and walk into town to work, because it's fruit parking, like they do in Ward Three.
Fruit Street.
Fruit Street, yeah. So it depends on.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't, it would be stupid to open a store in someplace like that.
Because they'd say, I hate going.
We're reopening a conversation we had two weeks ago when we voted. We're having the same conversation.
Well, as I said, so that's why we're, so we're back to, we do nothing, we've already voted, and this is due to the city council. So we do nothing tonight that is already in the pipeline of the city council. It would be the 42 vote.
With the old numbers.
With the 42 vote, with whatever you guys, whatever the decision was two weeks ago.
Which was like, how many, 25 car per person?
Well, it's based on vehicle trips, and the idea behind that really was that maybe if people are walking to go to their homes to see somebody, then it's not as much an impact. So you might have eight visitors instead of the seven vehicle trips.
Right, so the modification to the one from two weeks ago is five per day, no employees. Otherwise, you need special. Randy and Marilyn, I think you guys are still saying no trips per day, which is pretty much the way it is today. And we get penalties, because we, we had nobody applying for permits.
One of mine, Louis said, I asked.
But, so, we do nothing, we already moved 42 to the council. We accept this one the way it's written, with the modifications. Do we modify what Carolyn has written? We have to refer this today? I think those are our three options. So.
Will we continue?
Uh, no, we're gonna decide this one.
I move that we sponsor a home business, this is language written now, a home business, what's it called?
Amendment.
Amendment that reflects the changes presented to us by Carolyn this evening.
Is there a second?
Is this one where we have to vote the public hearing?
There's your public hearing.
It's all, it's all, I mean, sorry.
That's the second time you did that.
I know.
You did what?
Somebody just wanted to say something.
Sorry, can you do one more?
I just said I called Louis to ask how many he gets a month, and he said one, sometimes more a month for a special permit. I just wanted to throw, I didn't, I don't know, I just asked Louis today, but that's.
I also, I also wanted to say that in the Gazette editorial about this a couple of weeks ago, it says 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which would not be just the average nine-to-five day. It would extend into the evening hours.
I can't hear you.
It would extend into the evening hours, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, is what was recommended.
Right, that's what we're thinking. So the motion, a second, approval of what we have today. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Who was the second?
Mark. So we can vote on this, we voted in favor, it replaces the one that we moved ahead two weeks ago. We go, if we vote against this, then the one that's currently in the pipeline continues on. Is everybody okay with that? All right, so all in favor? Five, all opposed? Two, all right, so motion passes five to two, so this one will replace the one that's currently on. And just so, for the audience, this means, all we're doing is referring to city council.
Right.
City council will now do what theirs wanna do with it, which is do nothing. They can refer it back out to their ordinance, property, or ordinance supplement. They can, which place, we'll have a joint here with them again. So this is just, this is a whole, all we've done is put this in the city council's hands to figure out what they wanna do.
And when will that be coming to city council?
Well, it'll probably get referred out to the new city council, so, which means that's not gonna get going till February, I would say, so you're not gonna see a public hearing probably till February, March.
Okay.
Great, thank you, thanks very much. Thanks.
All right, last but not least. Chickens.
More chickens.
More chickens.
Do we stay for chickens?
I would say we're talking to discuss.
Chickens are okay, no card. All righty, so you all discussed this at the last meeting? Carolyn, do you wanna summarize the changes you've made since the last? You guys have only been talking about this for months.
Well, can you just give us some history, maybe, because that's the piece we're missing? Why did the ZRC decide this was the important thing to involve the deer in our?
This is the easiest. Because at our second meeting, Lily Lombard and Grow Food North Hampton came and wanted to talk about urban agriculture. And that's what. And the ZRC, we did, we thought this was gonna be, we really thought this was gonna be low-hanging fruit. I mean, we're gonna do this, and it's been two years, and it's not, it's been, it's been as hard or harder than the home business.
Well, this is very interesting, because where are the advocates? We have only had people come in opposition to it. I mean, the last meeting we had, there was nobody here favorable.
Well, you got email, the trips.
Right, and this was written in favor with Lily and Grow Food, and there's another chicken group.
I knew.
Uh, like backyard chicken.
Thank you. Wow. So they were all involved, Lily and. So, no, there was a lot, but again, since this has been going on, actually longer than King Street, so that's a little.
Longer than the Wilston, Wilston from?
2005.
Chickens have been around a long time, yeah.
Right, it's the egg, we're not sure.
Sorry, if you don't drive.
Sorry, hold on a second.
Exactly.
It's 900.
So how much do we really need to revisit at this point?
Well, so one way that Carolyn summarized the two issues.
So clearly, I think it was determined that 12 is too many. So what's in front of you, and then the other issue was, you know, by having those setbacks to residential structures be 20 feet, that would preclude all the people who currently have the three chicken allowance. So this language is, drops it to six, with some of the, keeping some of the other provisions, and either change the setback to residential structures down to 10 feet, which cuts it in half, which probably could be, could accommodate any site in the city, or just eliminate the setback provision for coops and just keep it silent the way it is today. So that's, those are the two.
See, Miss Brady calculated how many days. I'm gonna surprise you all, because I was a real advocate for this when we last talked about that. But I, I, the experience of having it makes me think that six is plenty for a household. They're dirty little birds.
What happened to them?
Into that into the minutes there.
What did you do there?
I am all for it, I really am, but I, the experience says that if you are, if you aren't dedicated to really cleaning and doing, it can be a neighbor problem.
It could be a mess, and they smell.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, do you, the changing from 20 feet to 10 feet, do you think that's an issue for the dirty little birds?
As you are now calling them.
Well, I guess I am a little concerned that it would, it would preclude a lot of places that have chickens right now.
The 20 feet are also the 10 feet.
No, I don't think 10 feet, if you, if you don't have more than 10 feet, you really don't need to have them.
I would read that C completely.
I guess they raise them on decks in New York City or something.
They do, we usually have to clean up after them all the time, and if you're willing to do that in the bedding, and that's more than weekly, if you really are not wanting any smell. So it, that, it's that kind of dedication that I think hobbyists don't.
And so what happens to this waste that goes in the landfill?
You had, I think it probably says here, you're able to handle it on-site, though.
You're telling me to stay on-site? For a while, but ultimately, where does it go?
The landfill, right?
Neighbors' bush.
Oh, so you.
The meadows.
You feel all the meadows, yeah. You feel that the four-foot, 10-foot new parameters would not preclude virtually anyone? I mean, because that was my concern, it just feels like that's really unfair to people who are currently completely within zoning, all of a sudden be eliminated, and I'm just.
Why pick 10 feet, because most houses are 10 feet from each other.
Right.
So if you imagine putting your coop right behind your back door, you're probably still gonna be at least 10 feet from another house. I mean, it doesn't make, you know, we're split in the office, Wayne and I are arguing about chickens every day, it's just a mess. Not, not really, but he, his, he's of the opinion that don't make any other changes, just increase it to six, end of story.
Yeah.
Don't even add A, B, C, D, and E, just move the number six. And don't have anything about setbacks, but keeping in the spirit of those ZRC recommendations, seeing that we didn't really, there's nothing really, it seems disdainful about A, B, D, and E, that those could potentially be kept, and and, and just the coop setback is just sort of the last remaining item for discussion, I think, if six makes sense.
I think we need a setback. Remember, I had spoken with the animal control officer, and she said she didn't have any trouble at all, but they go out and inspect each coop when, when they license it. So, I mean, I think if, and so she's providing that guidance, if it's an inappropriate place for the, it's the coop and the run. You've got the downside.
Have, have we thought about the number of chickens in relationship to square feet that each chicken needs?
Oh, no, 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 don't. Yes, there was, there was a recommendation, and apparently there is, someone has calculated that best practice is say X number of feet per blah blah.
There's no way you're gonna have, I mean, it's a nightmare thing to think about enforcing.
Nope, you have, you're one foot shy of yours. And, you know, maybe in five years, someone's gonna say, no, you need five more square feet or.
Or less birds than.
Yeah, I just think that makes it way too complicated. And, you know, the other argument is, we don't do any of this stuff for any other animal in the city. We don't do this for dogs, we do this for, people can have whatever number of dogs they want in the city. We don't tell them where you put your doghouse, we don't tell them how to, how to walk your dog, how to clean, you know, we tell them how to clean up.
Well, they're, they do, if there's a border, there could be border health issues with lots of dogs and cats in the house.
Right, but the same would apply, and saying we don't legislate it into zoning, and say you can only have two dogs, or you're not walking your dog enough last week, so, you know.
So the only difference is four instead, or six instead of four.
Right.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with slaughtering your own chicken at home, so. That's number E, why is that? Where are, well, actually, Captain.
There are border health issues around slaughter. I have, I just have.
Is it?
I propose that we get rid of C, but if you keep C, there's a typo in the second line, where 10 feet, it should be 10 feet from an existing residential structure. And C.
I disagree. Oh, you disagree with?
Decided which?
To or from, or?
It's dramatic.
You disagree with getting rid of C?
No coop being decided closer than 10 feet from an existing residential structure.
No, it's better. Well, what were you just disagreeing with?
Could that be your structure?
That'd be my house, if it were my.
No, on an abiding parcel.
Have feet from the.
I mean, the thing about it is, this was brought forward by pro-chicken people, and it just seems bizarre to me that it could have the effect of possibly eliminating the chickens for people who currently have them.
Unless their grandfather.
But they're only grandmothers.
I mean, I don't, I don't know why, that they would make it more restrictive.
I know, hold on a second.
Take charge, dude.
But, yeah, let's, let's, so we have, I think we have three things we have to decide on. One is, the first one is, everybody okay going from 12 to six? That seems like a pretty general consensus on 12 to six. Randy? Everybody go from six?
Or none.
The other thing is, as Carolyn mentioned, we don't have these kind of restrictions, A, B, C, D, and E, on any other animals. Do people think we need some kind of restriction on chickens? Because if so, I think these are good guidelines, I would actually even leave in C, but with the four feet and 10 feet. So I think that's the thing, so, Mark?
I, I agree with everything else written, with, with C included. I like that it went from 20 to 10 feet, but I think you need something. And I think the whole reason we've been talking for a year and a half about chickens is they're not like dogs or cats and so forth, and so having these regulations, they are kind of specific, and do present potential hazards that dogs and cats don't. And, and A through E, you know, they're pretty innocuous, they're not.
They're what you want.
Right, right, they're common sense, I think, so I don't see them as being an issue. So I'm in favor of all the changes that are shown.
Anybody, Fred?
I still have a question about, somebody suggested to me that, what about accessory apartments? Do they?
Somebody asked that last time.
Yeah, accessory like.
Little condos or even apartment buildings.
Yes.
Well, I think this was, didn't, there was a discussion about saying on a per parcel basis.
Right.
Um, did I add that in here?
I think we liked that, didn't we?
We did, I do.
Or female, all female chickens, up to three ducks.
Per parcel?
No, per parcel, it'll already just another. So if you're, if there's a four unit or a house, you can't have four, you're still gonna exist.
Four chicken cubs.
Or a two.
That could be twenty, that could be a lot of chickens.
Oh, is that in there, Carolyn?
It is now.
Where did you say that?
Good memory.
Per parcel.
No idea.
That would just, legally, parcel lot is anonymous, you know, a lot for parcel.
Franklin Walnut Street would be very close.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so we have Mark's proposal leaving in A through E, Randy adding the per lot, any others?
No, but my only issue with the whole thing is that there's no enforcement, correct?
Board of Health or Inspector Property, or the building inspector enforces?
Well, a Board of Health for the Board of Health issues. The zoning is, I mean, really, the, um, the setback in the number would be enforced by the building. Just like we do now, people call up and say, hey, my neighbor has four chickens, okay, I'll go do an inspection, I mean.
It's a, I remember Wayne saying in our last meeting that there's regulations about keeping your sidewalk clean, keeping the snow off it, but nobody really enforces it, but the fact that it's out there as a regulation is a message.
They do enforce it. They do.
Well, it, but again, it's on a complaint basis, or if someone, you know, it's not, the city doesn't go around and look for the violation.
Aren't you self-regulated?
But this is the information about what is expected of a responsible chicken owner, just as a sidewalk owner.
Well, and also it gives, you know, the, the butter, hey, my, my neighbor has six chickens, is that okay? And then you can say, yeah, it's okay if they do this.
Yeah.
Well, they don't give piano lessons.
No piano, no cooking with garlic.
No chickens driving.
All right, so, no, no, we're digressing.
Tangent.
Tangent. All right, so, anything else, any other comments, questions? Because I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second.
We're ready for a motion.
Devin?
We adopt the ordinance as revised by Carolyn to have six chickens, all of the criteria.
Here's a second. And Captain Beach. Uh, any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? You voted twice.
I voted, I voted for it.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, my hand was hidden behind the computer.
Hey, just remember, this will come back to us again.
No, I mean, the only reason I voted, or, I was ready to vote last time, and the only reason I felt shouldn't vote is because that was the first time the public got involved, and we really didn't have a lot of feedback, but there has never been a lot of feedback. We, we talked about it for a year and a half, I don't think the city cared about it.
That's what feels so weird, like, it's like the tree falling in a forest.
I said it before the last meeting, nobody minded it because we got done so late, so I didn't resend them.
And you missed, you missed June.
Um, we have one last thing, sorry, minutes.
May 26th, July 14th, and 8/11.
You missed June's, June 6th.
I know, I might not have done them yet. Oh, there.
I have some direction charts.
I don't think it was done. We can't, um, it's a delay.
June 23rd.
Oh, really? Okay, thanks. Oh, there.
I have some direction charts.
June 23rd.
Oh, really? Okay, thanks. Oh, yes, I do.
May 26th.
Okay, yeah, what are the changes, Randy?
On May 26th, it should be FX instead of FX.
Uh, it's fine.
Yes.
Most of the matter are public records. And then on page two of June 9th, it should be responsibly instead of responsibility.
Okay.
And also on page two, Robert Moore spoke against location, can't you put a 90 degree period?
What page?
Page two, uh, third paragraph from the bottom. Robert Moore says, can't you put a 90 degree? That's what it said. I, I don't have a suggested correction for that.
What was the subject?
Page two of June 23rd, it says, increase minimum height from 55 to 65. Should that be maximum height?
Yes.
That one, Captain, actually is a standard correction. That's it. I, I would not abstain, if I may have the floor. I, I would love to see the minutes at the next meeting, instead of having four and a half months with the minutes to go over, because I can't remember enough to correct the corrections we're taking. And if you, if you do one after every meeting, it's not any more than if you do them all at once.
I think on August 11th, can we change the word chicken to dirty little bird?
Isn't there a dance called dirty little bird?
No, it is, angry bird.
Angry bird, no, angry bird. All right, hold, we need a motion to, uh. No, no, we got a motion to approve it. That's intended.
I'm just looking for the minutes, it's very, but I'm working.
Second, all in favor? All right, motion approved.
No, Carolyn had, Carolyn had to move.
Oh, so just for next week, um, or two weeks from now, um, on October 27th for this hearing, it's a special permit. Marilyn is gonna be gone, Catherine has a conflict of interest, so we need five members, so one, two, three, four, five. Are you all gonna be here on the 27th?
What day is this?
On Thursday, the next hearing date, the 27th of October.
The next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay for that.
And Andrew, he can't vote?
Yeah, he can.
I'll try to push him.
Special permit. But we have five anyway, so just.
Okay, so does anyone want?
Remembering getting large plants or.
What's going down in here?
Is there anything else on the agenda for the evening, or should I?
Well, how are we gonna do some zoning stuff?
So, huh? Are you kidding, isn't that?
Do scheduling and discussion of the next round.
Sorry, that's why they're so good.